Oh, this is for, got it. I forgot to bring back my. I'll bring it back. The, uh, the, uh, partial, the, uh, draft budget, it says on the front to return it. The binder. Sorry about that. I'll bring it back.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, everybody here knows, uh, rules for open forum, so if anyone wants to speak on open forum. Item number three is discussion of the food sovereignty.
So you all received some information, uh, there's a fact sheet and then there's three licenses from three different facilities. So some of it, I like, obviously meat, uh, eggs, cheese, dairy, all of that stuff needs to stay the same, right? Cause the temperature regulation, those sorts of things. Uh, the only other thing that adds into this, if you take those vegetables from your garden and then now cut them up and make them into something and then process that, that doesn't exempt you from this either. So this is just literally from the garden to the end of the driveway is what this food sovereignty does. Now typically with the town of Lincoln, there are zoning, you know, places that we've said, you can't do that, this, that, and the other thing. Now I've always used common sense in that where if somebody sits one of these tables down by their driveway and sells a couple of vegetables, they normally bypass that. Cause it's not a long-term thing. The only other concern about having food stands and not having them permitted is if they're in DOT right of ways on gas lines, power lines, those sorts of things. So that would be my other concern or issue with just letting this be a blanket type of situation. We could, we could. And right now the fee for that is, um, depending on what zone you're in, you could get away with a home occupation, maybe that's a $20 permit. And then the land use application, if you needed to go to the planning board would be a hundred. So those are what we currently do now. But my, like I said, my concern with putting food stands out that aren't permitted would be DOT right of ways gap, those sorts of issues would be my big concern. We very well could. That they would still need to, you know, uh, the city of Bangor does do an application instead of a permit. So then that way it covers all the bases. This is where I'm going to put the stand. This is when it's going to be open. And then that way we could at least verify that that's not going to be an issue later on down the road.
And they call it the food sovereignty license.
Right. Yeah. Correct. Yeah. It's just a checks and balance. Right. But then the other concern would be what's, how are we going to move forward when somebody does start making salsas? And all of those other items that are not part of this. So that's another thing. Are you all going to start finding people? Like how, you know, what's the direction?
Where's the kids lemonade saying?
I, I would probably bypass that because that's one of those common sense type of right for me. Well, that's true. Um, but typically lemon, water, sugar, and it's usually a child. Pretty safe usually. Um, I mean, if it was an adult that looked very un kept, that was selling lemonade on the side of the road, I might stop and question that. But a couple of little kids, probably not.
No, Mr. Chairman, uh, I read all three of these. I like, I like to adopt the ones that we feel, I like the language in it. And outside the DOT right of way, Mander, if I remember correctly, it's 25 feet to the edge of the road.
It depends on the zone.
It depends upon the zone.
Correct. It's well, it's already set. Well, some of them are set by the DOT and then the other ones are set by us. So yeah, depending on which road it is. Right. Yeah, absolutely.
The, the thing about to the end of the driveway, so it couldn't, they can't take their food and take it to, uh, the, uh, the farmer's market that we have out here.
Oh, they could. Absolutely. Their food. Yeah.
Prevent them from doing that.
Oh, absolutely not. No, no, no way. They could still do that. They could do their stand and do the farmer's market every Friday.
Okay.
Go for it.
And but if it's a permanent stand, we have a different idea than if it's, I mean.
Right. Because of those infrastructure issues, that would be my problem. At Verson Power Line, I mean, there's all kinds of different issues. Now we've got gas added into it. Yeah, those are, those are things to think about. And then a lot of people are burying their, their power now. That's very popular. So I mean, there's another, there's another thing to think about. Easements, maybe you didn't know there was an easement on your, you know what I mean? I don't know. You put that there and then now the neighbor, I mean, I could just see some of these things happening. That's all. It is not. Cause we'll need to do a two week, two week public notice with this and all of that. Yep.
And still have a three.
Do we want to change any of these like, or do you want us to present these three and kind of go from there?
Well, I'd like to present them and see what council, what full council is, see what their ideas are as far as, you know.
Yeah, me. Right, right. And you know, and we kind of already have with the planning board and our checks and balances, we kind of already regulate these items already.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, I don't, I think what people are thinking is that they're going to be able to make these items and sell them without any regulation. And that is not the case. Do not make the salsa unlabeled and sell it to somebody. You just cannot do that. Or any of the other whole jam. Yeah, not, can't do that.
So on the farm stand, if somebody has a farm stand at the end of the, can, can we have in there that it one can't be a permanent structure, two can't have, uh, power to it? Those kinds of things.
Structure though, am I going to make it move every hundred and twenty days or we?
I think that's what we would need to figure out is what's the, you know.
Then that's another thing. So then I have to track down like, how many are we going to have? And then every year I have to make sure.
Okay.
Chasing campers.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, those are the things that.
If it has, uh, I, I see. So it would have no foundation, no electricity, no water to it?
I, I would think electricity would be a hard one because then I could see somebody go like, well, I need lights and then I got a square and now I want a fan. And do you see that? I can see that being another question.
Okay.
And then they want to wash their hands. So then now they want plumbing. I could see that leading into something else. Absolutely.
Yeah, but each one of those makes it pretty close to a permanent structure.
Which now all I'm going to do is get a hundred dollar planning board permit and maybe have that from instructor now without this. They can already do it. Pull out the right permits and do the right process. They can have a permanent one now. Nobody said they couldn't unless they're in a zone that doesn't permit. Might I made a suggestion about this one too? Maybe, maybe the planning board going through it and going through the zones and then bringing it back to the council. Thank you. So we are dealing with the water flow, uh, during planning board next week. Um, so I would like to take this up with them in August to give them a little time to process that. So this wouldn't probably come back to you until maybe October, November. Just to kind of give the planning board time to get through that one first and then this one.
And will we have that a public hearing?
We will have a public hearing during planning board and then when we bring it back, we'll have another public hearing then. Yep, absolutely. So there'll be two. Right, correct. And I think the planning board where they already know the zoning and what we've done with the zoning in the past, that it might be better to fit it in there and do it that way if it's acceptable. Thank you.
So did you say next week or two weeks for the planning board?
It's, uh, July 22. I'm sorry.
Two weeks.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Thank you. Thank you.
And the planning board could even suggest which one fits like the best.
Right. And then we may be able to take, because there was a couple of things in Bangor that I liked. Um, so we could kind of pull from each one and mold it together and then make sure it fits what we've already got going on in our ordinance and not cause a problem later.
Since Amanda is out and we have two items that are not on the agenda, one of them is forest service in Lincoln. So maybe she could do that now.
Yes, thank you. Yes. So I've been talking to Tim. Yep. His last name just went right straight out of my brain, but I did email it to you, his last name and his contact information. Uh, so we did this part of our chapter 1,000 shoreland zoning when the state made us convert back in, it started in 12 and then it went and went and went, but we actually voted on it in 21. And we voted for the state forestry to continue to manage forest cutting in the shoreline zone because it's a law to take in. And we really were looking at another person at the time and training and it wasn't cost effective. Um, so somehow we voted on it. We voted for the state to keep that. We went through planning board. We went through council. We did all of that. Um, it got sent to the DEP and to the state forestry department. Where it went from there, I'm not sure. So this whole time we thought the state was doing it and the state thought we were doing it. So this all came about because there was a possible violation, which it didn't end up being so, but we found this paperwork nightmare. So I am dealing, uh, with Mr. Tim in the state to see if the vote that we did back in 21 is still valid. Or if we're going to have to come back and vote this again. But he did tell me that they had a clause in that law. And depending on how many violations they had to intervene with the town's behalf, they were going to take that program away from everybody in the state. They are one town away from taking it from everybody in the state. So by the time we get it fixed, it may be already taken from us, but I still think we need to get it fixed. So Tim's going to let us know if we just carry forward with what we have or we'll have to re-vote it. Not yet. Cause he had to talk to, he's new apparently. He's only been around for a couple of months. And so he had to talk to his supervisor because he didn't know how to deal with this. Naturally. So they do have another copy of our ordinance and the vote, um, that's by hand and all of that fun stuff. So they have all the information.
So you're saying that there are only one town away from withdrawing that whole program?
Correct.
And there's other folks telling us that they're going to make it mandatory for every, every town in the state. I know, huh? I don't know. I guess we'll have to wait for our answer on that.
I have done everything that I can at this point in time. Correct. So I will keep poking that bear. You know, I haven't heard from him yet this week. So, but that was at the end of last week and people vacations and all of that. So I will poke again next week.
Do you have another one for Amanda?
Not yet. I think, uh, Stu Jacobs from the airport could be next.
So in the, during the budget session, you, you had asked me to do some research and come back with options. Recognizing that we presently don't have a building located where we need it. These are some of the options that came up with. Of the different ones, the one that seems to be the most economically reasonable for expenditures, maybe work of region three of their students. Trying out the building for us. And I've talked to several people that are involved, both in the airport advisory committee and the airport. We think we have enough volunteers who can probably finish the inside of it on our own on this purchase. Intention would be for any one of these options that were either, if any one of them was chosen, that it would be temporary until we're successful in a grant. We've been applying right every year for federal FAA, uh, airport terminal grant that would pay design and construction of picture up there. It's in the capital improvement plan that the FAA works at, uh, that is highly competitive and we have not been successful in the past years, but we continue to submit so this would replace that. It would just be kind of a stopgap there. Then building could easily be moved somewhere else in the next month. I have a couple of thoughts about future use for it. Chance to talk to the chief, knowing that, but I know he's looking at trying to put that on. Could always, if the grant was successful, we could move it to a place like that where.
What's the time, the average, if we go with region three, it's going to take them longer to do what I did.
Well, they, they, I talked to the director and he indicated that they, uh, their cafeteria program requires, uh, students who are in planning and construction. They're always looking for projects. They've built small buildings before and some classes they've done. Storage buildings are veterans. This is the type of program, uh, type of project economy look for. He, he would have done in the fall. Place it. You know, that timeframe are certainly by spring. So I mean that if, if we got to go ahead and do something like this, that sooner I communicate with them, the sooner they do the planning. And they, uh, he recommended that that if we chose them, allow them to purchase all the materials they get at a significant, significantly better cost than even the town would get if I went and purchased materials myself. So there's quite a few benefits to using that program.
But would we have a solid number for, this is, this is what your material is going to cost you and that's it?
Well, I think, I think we could get that. Um, I would need to go meet with them with, with some idea of what was acceptable to the council.
With building stuff, I don't know if you can do it within an eighty-three hundred dollars for twelve by sixteen. Yeah, I don't know. I'd like to, I'd like to present this to the council.
Yes, I think the full council needs to hear this. Uh, and my question is, not the question Stu likes so well, uh, is if in a matter of a few years, we're going to completely replace this building, do you actually want to put money in this building now?
What was your other idea for that building? Shouldn't it be a grant to build it?
Well, we have been slowly renovating the other building that both the budget committee and the council determined that we're not going to invest any further in it. There's, there's several options. One option, I mean, just operate the way we have been and hopefully someday it'll change and we'll get a funded building. That, that is one option. This option with a temporary building is probably the better option as it relates to the operation of the airport. And it was never designed for that type of use because it was built for the campground when the campground operated. And that campground wasn't even part of town property. So now it's part of town property cannot be used, uh, for that purpose. Yes, yes. It doesn't look like it. Uh, I, and that question has been asked. I haven't had it looked at by people that do that professionally. I, you know, I'm not sure, but it's on a, it's on a slab. Have to replace a slab.
With these, these prices either we have, that wouldn't include any slab or any other pending that, anything that we.
No, just set it on block. Be, you know, temporarily structured. I could always ask the, meet with the director at region three and see if we can get a price and then report that back to the town manager and to the council.
Mr. Chairman, what have you been doing for the last several years with that plan?
Then you have the song wrong end of the other. Well, I, I only, I had a floor. I opened a floor and it, it's very inconvenient for someone coming in there. And, uh, you know, it's, it's just, we're going to move forward to the airport, you know, and do these things. That's why, that's why we're trying to. If the grant came, we'd have a grant for a building, but this would be a temporary thing. Be situated in the right place.
Now could we also, not doing nothing right, but could we also get a price on maybe what it would cost to move that building?
Yeah, I bet you it's going to be eighty-three hundred stuff with this. But yeah, why not? We're, we're looking at everything. I don't see where it goes.
I'm curious if, I know we're talking what, what that looks like on that end. Where is it going to go? Like in reference to the guests?
It would be between, basically between the gas pumps and taxiway that you can float. It's in the, it's in the airport layout plan.
Okay.
Um, there's a designated part of that property that would be utilized for a company.
There's a point there and say, okay, so really kind of when you come in to the left.
Yes. Yes. And it, and if the temporary building was, was, we were successful doing that, I'd probably set it in that same location. So that it's close to the existing power. So you can run power to it. And any of these would require, any of these options would require some finishing on the part of the pilot group and they've all volunteered to put their time and effort in with, in some sort of service porta potty. And that would go from four or five months building at the other end. Cause in the winter time, you have to show all the water down because it's not heated anyway and drain everything. So it doesn't get, the one that's there now doesn't get any use in the late fall and winter. We open it up, usually try to have it open by Memorial Day. And then it's open for those few months through early fall. And so we go from that to at least ten months a year with a, probably with a porta potty and a twelve months a year without the access to the bathroom.
What is the, don't you have to have that, the computer system and, and everything in that?
Yeah.
Building.
And we, we would move it up to that. We'd move that system up to that. We can do that. That's pretty easily done. The internet feed is based, uh, direct line of sight from mountaintop. So we'd be able to, it would be able to.
Have an electrician that must be a volunteer.
Uh, yes.
Where would the water supply come from?
We wouldn't put any water in it at this point. Would use, uh, just a porta potty. No, we probably wouldn't have that. The, the, and there was some discussion about the cost of, uh, a well on a septic. But the problem with doing that for this building is that we could easily create serious problems with the design and development of a, of a building that's larger funded by the FAA. We were encouraged not to go down that road. If you're going to pursue a grant, have the, the well on separate part of the grant. Then it's all designed at the same time for that particular use.
So I mean, this is going to be something that's going to come to the whole council and if you're going to just put it on blocks and have porta potty. You put a permanent structure there, they're probably not going to give you a grant for permanent structure.
Well, and we, we're not asking for that.
Right.
We're asking for some very temporary that could be moved later, utilized somewhere else or already sold.
And there's, there's three options there that are under, I think we're looking at ten thousand dollars per budget.
Yes.
There's three options there that are under that.
My understanding, and I don't have any figures, I will, I will approach region three and try to get better numbers, but if we tell them, uh, twelve by sixteen and they, they do, uh, materials to us and price it. They, I, and I shared some of these numbers with them and I said they could certainly, it would be substantially less.
Would the, would the other officers, would they place the structure for you? If they built it, would they bring it in and place it for you?
Uh, I think that's part of the cost. And region three uses tree line and they have a trailer that does it for the school.
Now we move to the question of the two holidays that are both state and federal holidays and are not recognized by the town of Lincoln. As you know, our town office is open even when state, county, federal offices are closed. And, uh, a couple of the union contracts already sort of acknowledged this. Uh, but we're currently negotiating with FIRE for a renewal contract. So it would be a good time to make a decision that we are going to recognize these holidays and remove the floating holidays that some of these employees have now. I think Melissa has the pieces of the contracts there. I doubt there's any confusion, but we are discussing Martin Luther King Day and Juneteenth.
Firstly, I think we should observe the holidays. The federal holidays and I think that would be patent across every contract.
Hmm. Once I get a sense from new people as to where you might go, then we.
Low-holding on anything tonight, I would just say that my opinion would be to observe all of it. But I'm sitting here thinking that you've already had a problem if the state has got the clothes on those days and there's a huge amount of work that you can't.
There are things, there are things that cannot be done. That's correct. So I know you're not voting tonight, but if I get a sense of where you might be headed, then we could not at the July 14th council meeting, but maybe by the August council meeting. We could have a resolve in front of you as to what to do with these. we could have a resolve in front of you as to what to do with these.
No, would they lose the PTO day for Martin Luther King?
They would lose the floating holiday, yes, but they would gain that one, so it's a trade.
Well, because like what says is not over, so we really can't really business the building. And federal holidays, I would just make sure that the people negotiate to their down all of us.
By as early as tomorrow morning, I could notify the negotiator. Melissa wants to say something.
It is already very clear in the fire contract, which is the one he's working on, that if we do start observing those two holidays, they will lose those two floating holidays. And the same with the police contract, very clear.
There's also thought that regarding economic development, that we now have this town in a position of appearing a bit strange compared to all the others. And there are some companies who would come to town, but when they learn this, they go, oh, is this place that different? And they're not taking it that different in the positive. No, if you, I don't think.
This is my, you have to have your say there in the workshop.
Oh, only about the building that it comes on the skids, you could move it, I'm sure they need stored somewhere. I'm sure packing that could recycle it, I'm sure that could be, I'm sure it can utilize quickly. Well, I just would want it to be supportive.
I was just gonna say, I moved the building similar to that before, we took two forklifts, we looked at slab and all, and said, oh, okay. I moved it the same way, about the same. If you're not hooking up one, then it's really not an issue.
And we could, we could move that building down the other end of the runway?
We'd move on somewhere, if not bigger, took two big forklifts, like bucket loads of forks, it's been pretty strong to build. Picked it up that time or inside of all.
That would be even less expensive than what we have right now.
If that building is satisfactory, you could buy just as much.
Another thing we ought to look at is, I just bought a ten by fourteen, twenty-five hundred five. It's like eight years old, finished, but that's an option too.
Chairman, uh, I'd like to know if we as a town found out who the contractor was and if that contractor had a harvest notification because I'm the state of forest management practices. It is highly illegal to move wood, sell wood without a harvest notification. There's gotta be different steps taken, there's gotta be load slips signed, there's gotta be.
She has gone, yes.
I, I mean, I'd like to find that out because uh.
Do you know who the, the people who are the world, no, sorry, had the, the skitter, was it, what was it, skitter and a?
Havister, not a lever.
Havister and a lever.
In a checker.
That had to do with the area where the asbestos containing material was gonna go. They did that bit of work and then they left. And it happened to be that the person that got the contract was tree line.
Was there a harvest notification in our contract? The last harvest notification, I know that they apply hopes, I mean.
I don't know, but they're doing this under uh the engineering company that is doing the building of the asbestos containing area and that's being done with the DEP, so I would think.
Because if, if, if wood was harvested, sold, marketed and there was no harvest, harvest, harvest notification, that's them. And not only the contractor can get in trouble, the landlord can get in trouble, which would be us. So I think we ought to look into that.
Well, I can ask, but I make the presumption that tree line knows these rules.
If you want to understand that, but we ought to know everything that's going on in this town.
We had, we had to clear that, because we're gonna dig a big hole, that's where the asbestos is.
I understand that.
So, I don't believe this was any great big logging operation. The, correct, I mean, I, I didn't see the site.
Well, it sounds like the main piece of the question is, did they sell the lumber? Did they sell it or what, just that's a, that's a fair. A simple thing, if they didn't sell it, that this isn't an issue.
I, I would have thought they would sell it.
I would think so.
If they cut it off, that if we asked them to take that out, I would have told them so.
Did you get copies of the perp receipts, which?
How would we know that was handled?
We're supposed to.
We, we, the engineering company that's building this, it's gonna be, I don't chase them. Engineering company, if somebody that does the work, well, I don't know if we even know that.
Because us being the entity that owns the property, just like if I cut your land, John, every load of wood that comes off your land, I gotta give you a signed copy of each piece of material that comes off your land for accountability wise. So, so the town should have got something saying that there's five loads of chips, we'll say. And if the town didn't get nothing, that, that is, that's like all.
That's like all.
Yeah.
The original, that's like all, or seventeen minutes. Well, it, it, it could be, as far as, what I'm saying is, I was told a certified lawyer would have all the paperwork he was supposed to have and cut trees off of public property.
If we get copies of that.
I didn't know, I didn't know.
Well, we do.
And tomorrow we can ask the engineering firm that did this.
Thank you, we can, absolutely, absolutely, but.
I just want us, us to talk to the department.
I was more concerned that there was somebody in there cutting on that property, we didn't know them. But we do know the engineer firm. That was my concern. Uh, but I would hope a certified lawyer would.
Put in the official paperwork.
You would think so, you would think so. You know, I mean, I've had land cut for a whole people, done just that, I mean, that's why you get a certified lawyer. Anything else?
Yes. I would just like to say, I went to the beach yesterday and there's a lot of people that use the beach. All the last six years, it has never been like this. But they seem to be well behaved and the teenagers in charge, they seem to love it.
The one complaint we have regarding that is that some people are taking their children there in the morning and leaving them for the day.
Exactly.
But they didn't drive you to the beach and leave you there.
And we were allowed to ride seven miles on your bike, okay?
That's right, we left in the morning, eight or nine, they know where you were.
Mr. Chairman, another thing I'd like to have an update on, how the reevaluations going on, on the properties, uh, like the fifty plus properties. I'll be going out there and making sure that they're being added to the tax.
There was folks out on our road, they have the, along my camp road and, and they found a couple of places, a couple more places. So that work is getting done.
Okay.
And I have to know somebody that might have caught them on camera, so. But I thought we had a vehicle for those forces to use, why don't we land a vehicle on the?
We don't have vehicles, when we had the electric cars, we did, but those are gone. And until these new police cars show up.
Police cars, okay, 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 okay. I just, I, I don't, we're not gonna be paying mileage once we get those little cars.
Well, certainly we'll reduce the mileage we're paying, yes, greatly.
Yeah.
And we got two SUVs down to the public works. One is them issues all the time, the other one, the one that we supposedly had sold, this is the second one.
The other one needs to go on its way, but it can't pass inspection.
And the other, I, I got something else, I just want to bring it to the council's thought. Uh, next year marks the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of United States. I would like to see uh the parade down on Port of Drive and fireworks down on Port of Drive. Instead of going home. Just for this next year only, for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our country. There's been a lot of people that reached out to me and, and if it's something that the town don't wanna do, then, then we'll probably go ahead and do something. In the meantime anyways, but I think it would be good for the town to say, you know, it's not a regret that our country turns two hundred and fifty years old.
And Jim? No. Just a motion for a jury. That's all.
Easy, easy. Wanna stay here?
No.